Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's board meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance that will be followed by a moment of silence. Today, we will be led by Supervisor Chucklin.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one on our agenda this morning is Board of Supervisors Matters, and today, we will begin with Supervisor Valero.
All right. So first, I want to thank our colleague, Amy Chucklin, for representing us at last week's press conference. I think she did an outstanding job of reminding us to stay safe, follow guidelines, and to think of others in this time of difficulty. The press conference, for me at least, serves as a reminder to all that we are truly better together, and that we must work hand in hand in order to make sure our arrows are all pointing in the same direction. Last week, I received an email from In Shape letting us know of the company's safety measures and what they're doing in order to keep their clients safe and healthy during workouts. I reached out to In Shape Regional Director Jason Allen and Director of Risk Safety Eric Skow about taking a tour of the facility. Well, yesterday, I had the opportunity to visit the facility on Moonee. I want to commend In Shape Visalia for the care and safety in the entire building displayed during my visit. They truly are taking this seriously and doing whatever possible to provide a safe environment for their customers. They have an above and beyond type of mentality that exceeded my expectations during my visit, especially as I get emails and calls questioning gym safety. So again, just applauds to In Shape for their tremendous work. Last Thursday, I attended the Cuiya Delta Community Engagement Virtual Meeting to receive an update from the CEO Gary Herbst about the challenges Cuiya Delta faces in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. What really shocked me was his talk about changing the Pediatrics Unit into additional capacity due to the surge in people being admitted into hospital. I was also alarmed at the discussion on nurses and his plea for many to work additional shifts due to demand. I want to thank Gary for his transparency and leadership, especially during this time. Yesterday, I had a conference call with a Fresno Bee reporter and Abigail Solis, Senior Development Specialist for Self-Help Enterprises, on home weatherization and electrification. As you know, about 15 pilot projects are in the works in the Central Valley, several of them being Allen's Worth, as well as Seville and West Goshen. And so these pilot projects will help disadvantaged communities improve their utility and to encourage safety and wellness for its residents. And so I just want to say that thanks to everyone for a great Fourth of July weekend, and that we continue to stay safe out there and look out for our neighbors. And that is all I have, Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. On last Thursday, we had a East Tule Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting and took some time to go over the rules and regulations that are being put together. They're going to be out, or I think they are out now, for public comment. If anyone is interested in looking at those, they're fairly involved and will be very impactful on the county and throughout the state in the upcoming years. So something to take a look at. And we also have been going over the specifics on water banking and those types of issues and how that will happen over these next 20 years. And so again, any interest in that, feel free to take a look and to make any comments on that. And then on Saturday, the Fourth, although it was a very kind of a different Independence Day celebration than we're all used to, it was a great time for reflection on the freedoms that we enjoy here in this country. And so it did give us some pause to have some introspection on what those freedoms mean and what they cost. On Monday, yesterday, we had the Sequoia Reservoir Enlargement Project, SREP, and the Tule River Joint Powers Authority meeting. And happy to say that we'll be having a groundbreaking at the Success Reservoir for the new spillway in August. $135.5 million has been allocated to the Corps of Engineers for that project to increase the storage at Success Lake. So that's something that's been a very, very, very long time coming. And right now, the water level, if you've been by, it's been up. They're just about ready to start the water releases for downstream the middle of this month, and it'll go through about the end of August. So you see those levels drop pretty quickly as we go to recharge groundwater and get those contracts fulfilled. But a lot of exciting things going to be happening over the next several years there at the Success Lake Reservoir. And also yesterday was Habitat for Humanity Building Hope in Porterville meeting, and we had a pretty good discussion about the projects that have been going on in Tulare and Kings County. So there's still things that are moving forward, still some families that are in need and working with cities to get property that's been abandoned or taken back. And we've been able to do some projects in Porterville. In that way, we're looking for new sites right now in Porterville. And of course, the big challenges of fundraising during this time. But hopefully that'll be loosening up, and people have been, they're always pretty generous when you mention Habitat for Humanity. It's pretty universally accepted. So some good things will be coming up with that group as well. And that's all I have this morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tomorrow, the NACO Public Lands and Western Interstate Regional Committee will be having a meeting that will include updates and discussion from the Department of Interior Deputy Secretary will be there. The secretary was not able to join. The Forest Service Chief, Vicki Christensen, Western Governors Association, which is an organization of Western Governors, and they work very well with NACO's WIR and Public Lands Committee. There's a lot of shared interest as far as from a policy standpoint. There's also going to be discussion on Western Water Issues and an update from the National Interagency Fire Center, which helps to develop fire policy for agencies throughout the country and try and move towards having a safer arena as it comes to fire issues in particular. The only other thing that I want to report is next Monday, NACO, also National Association of Counties, will be having their Town Hall. This is in lieu of the annual conference. And the major issue that will be discussed will be any emergency resolutions. NACO has taken a policy to go ahead and move forward with any resolutions that were already approved last year and continue on with them, making minor edits and amendments if needed for some of the existing resolutions on policy issues, and only taking up a handful of emergency resolutions, as well as the election of officers. So that will be, it will probably mainly be over the election of officers is what I anticipate for next Monday. With that, happy birthday Supervisor Valero.
Thank you.
Supervisor Chucklin, you're next.
All right. Thank you. I too got the invite from In Shape City. I did not go because I thought it was a trap, and they were going to do an intervention on me. So I'm glad that you had a good time there. Last Thursday, I did a PSA video at Health and Human Services regarding the Fourth of July weekend and encouraging folks not to gather. But from what I've seen on the news, that really didn't help much. I also want to thank Sheriff Boudreau, Gary Herbst, Donna Hefner from Sierra View Hospital, Tim, and Dr. Sharon Minnick for participating in our press conference on Friday morning. The sheriff had some really good things to say as far as the education that they're going to be doing regarding wearing a mask and handing out masks to those who are not wearing them or who don't have one. Our hospitals, as you've probably heard, are starting to fill up or have more COVID patients, so that's a concern. I also want to talk a little bit about, I stayed last Wednesday night at the New Darling Hotel in downtown Visalia. I think we've heard a lot about that lately, an old county building that was abandoned for about 10 years. And I encourage folks, even if you don't stay there, they have a rooftop lounge and restaurant. You do have to make a reservation. It's like you're not even in Visalia or Tulare County anymore when you stay there. So I encourage you to at least go and check it out. That's it.
All right. Thank you Supervisor. A few things that I wanted to go over this morning. I don't believe any of us will be able to make it, but today at noon at the Tulare Golf Course, the Friant Water Authority is hosting Paul Souza, and he's the Regional Director of the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. And they will be having a discussion surrounding the biological opinions and their implementation and effect on surface water flows along the Friant Kern Canal and also in the state of California on the California Water Project. I think it should be a great discussion, and appreciate Friant for bringing in Mr. Souza and hosting this discussion. It should be very positive for anyone who's able to attend and ask questions. Paul Souza was critical in the new science that was implemented and resulted in updated opinions that will hopefully increase water flows towards the southern end of the state. Tomorrow, the TESSERA Board, the Retirement Board, will be having its meeting. It will be at 8:30 at the TESSERA Board Chambers. At 10:30 a.m., the Investment Committee will be meeting for the Retirement Board. Monday, on July 13th, at 10:00 a.m., there will be a virtual Kings-Tulare Area Agency on Aging meeting. Then at 1:00, the Greater Cuiya Groundwater Sustainability Agency will be having its meeting at 1:00 p.m., and that will be in Farmersville at the office. And then at 3:00 here in the Board Chambers or in Conference Rooms A and B, we will be having our monthly Water Commission meeting. And then just a reminder for those in attendance, staff and members of the public, next Tuesday, the 14th, the Board of Supervisors meeting is an evening meeting. That will be held at 7:00 p.m. right here in these Board Chambers. Our evening meeting series is a bit different this year. Typically, we try to go out into different communities throughout Tulare County. But unfortunately, due to this COVID situation, we are going to be having the meeting here in these Board Chambers. Is it 6:30? Okay. Sorry, I had 7:00 on my calendar. So thanks for the reminder. Yeah, 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 okay. Appreciate it. That's all that I had and wanted to go over for this morning. I hope everybody had a safe and healthy Fourth of July. It was amazing. I feel like I saw more fireworks during a time when there were supposed to be none and no organized shows than you do when there are shows. But hopefully, it was safe and healthy, and I did not hear of any major instances from any of the local fire departments, and that's very good news. Item two on our agenda is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts here in Tulare County. Mr. Lutz?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CAO Council, Tim Lutz, Health and Human Services Agency Director, for your weekly update. It was quite a busy week last week, unfortunately. We did continue to see a significant rise in cases over our week-to-week numbers. Case levels this morning are at 5,175 individuals. That's up 1,019 from last week and a 24.5% increase. Unfortunately, we're also at 139 deaths, which is an additional 13 deaths over last week, or a 10% increase. Recoveries do continue to increase as well. 3,095 is our current recovered number. So when we look at what I typically come in and discuss each week is our cumulative cases per week and kind of where that's trending. We definitely saw a pretty significant uptick over the prior weeks. When we look at that week-to-week number, we're at 1,137 cases, which is 63.6% increase over the prior week's total number of cases. Not surprisingly, to, you know, to really be the background behind that story, our case rate, that 14-day case rate that we continue to track, increased by 51.6% from last week, again, going from 251.7 per 100,000 to 381.7 per 100,000. That coupled with our hospitalizations was the primary driver for our need to try and do the press conference last week, to try and really get the word out, public education on the importance of following the social distancing, masking, and no gathering orders, given that we have a pretty high rate of spread across our community. Looking at some of our comparison counties over the last 14 days, I think is also helpful, where we see, you know, what is the context behind the 381 per 100,000. When you look at that, we see some of the high peaks with Imperial County at around 966, which I think really is a pretty staggering number when you think about it, given the smaller population of that county. But it also highlights the magnitude of that outbreak. When we looked at our testing positivity, we continued to see where, you know, today's number that I'll report will likely trend downward by a few points. Our adjusted positivity for last week was 7.9%. What I reported to you, I think, was 8.4%. As the negative tests come in, there is a delay between when the commercial labs primarily are putting negative tests into the state system. So that's why we'll see this slow correction or adjustment. So our adjusted number last week, 7.9, compared to what we're projecting right now, which is 14.3%. Again, I expect that to come down a little bit as we get the additional negative cases that were not in the system. And our effective actually did tick down. We were at the 1.2, currently at 1.05. What that's indicating is that we, you know, based on that metric, the cases will continue at the rate that we're at, as opposed to continue to accelerate, if you think about it from an acceleration-deceleration standpoint of where we're going. That says that we could probably see this level of case rate barring any other changes that we might make. The hospitalizations have been a thing that we're looking at very closely. Understandably, that's an area of significant concern on overwhelming our medical resources throughout the community. We saw a 44.4% increase in hospitalizations over last week. I reported, I think, 54 hospitalizations last week, now at 78. And recognizing that the numbers, and I've seen the comment out there, "sound small" when you look at overall capacity of our hospitals and historical numbers, that is a very concerning number, where our hospitals are at capacity or within 10% of that capacity. Recognizing one of the biggest challenges is our medical workforce. The frontline workers are also, you know, frequently getting COVID themselves, which takes them out of action, and that generates a pretty significant staffing issue for our hospitals. I think Cuiya Delta and CEO Herbst had shared last week that I think totally about 150 positive employees across Cuiya Delta's system. So that creates a real challenge in addition to space. Sierra View actually had to convert a conference room that they have into a patient area in addition to Cuiya's discussions about their Pediatrics Unit. So we're seeing hospitals having to make a lot of adjustments to meet the increase in demand. Happy to report in terms of our alternative care sites, that Porterville Developmental Center, which has now been designated the Porterville Alternative Care Site, or PAX, went operational on Friday. Sierra View had already transferred three of their patients over there, and we're looking at an additional three. There are some pretty strict criteria in terms of those transfers, and I think the hospitals are organizing and looking at their patients, which ones would be eligible and best candidates to try and transfer over to PAX.
Quick, and I apologize. But do you know the hesitancy or why not to transfer patients over, like, say, to the convention center since Cuiya Delta is seeing that increase? Is there some hesitancy from the hospital itself to kind of start putting individuals over there, or they just want to make sure that they're in-house? Can you explain some of that?
Sure. So for them, Cuiya, to transfer any of their patients over to the convention center, which, you know, has been designated as an additional location for alternative care site, we would need to basically take over at least a good chunk of the convention center, get beds and other equipment allocated there, and then start to transfer those lower-acuity patients, those ones that don't require as much hospital intervention but do require continual monitoring to be transferred. Given that we have the PAX location, the preference is we will maximize and utilize that alternative care site first, and then evaluate the need to pop up additional alternative care sites.
Tim, the folks that are being transferred to PAX, are they are non-COVID or are they COVID?
They are COVID. And they're your lower acuity. What we're finding is a number of times we would, or the hospitals, I should say, would have been discharging these patients to skilled nursing facilities. Well, where we have issues at our skilled nursing facilities, they can't discharge those patients there to finish their recovery. That's the prime population that hospitals are looking at to move over to PAX. So the current capacity for PAX remains at 50. We're continually discussing with the state on the ability to increase that to the 150 that it is built out for. We do know in talking to other counties in our region that they also are looking at sending patients over to PAX. I imagine after this week's end, we'll have a good idea of what their census is, where it seems to be going, and whether or not we need to be pushing for that expansion. But I would expect within the next couple of weeks, based on current trends, that we would be increasing that to the 150. Then also wanted to provide an update, you know, when we're talking about treatment and care on remdesivir. We did get word that we'll be receiving additional allocations from the federal stockpile. And at this point, they're estimating that we'll continue to receive allocations through September. To date, we've received 722 doses. Sierra View has treated 49 patients with it. They either have received or are receiving. Cuiya Delta has treated 68 patients. And both hospitals are basically at or out of their current allocation. Probably late last night, we received a new shipment of about 271 doses. We're seeing those come roughly every two weeks. So we would expect in two weeks to receive another allocation.
And Tim, are they seeing a positive effect with that? I mean, is it...
They are reporting that the patients are responding favorably to the treatment. I can try and dig a little deeper to get some more specific information if the Board would like some more details on kind of overall treatment outcomes for those. I don't have it with me today.
That's fine. Thanks.
So then, testing is another area that wanted to discuss. Of course, we all have been really pushing, and we being the, you know, counties across the state, here locally, really pushing maximize testing, which has had an impact. Unfortunately, now we're in a, the ironic, you know, stance of now trying to make some adjustments as a result of that. So we have seen significant testing volume. And in fact, just to take a minute to brag on the amazing staff at our public health lab, we actually total COVID tests to date surpassed the state's public health lab for number of tests last week. As of yesterday, we were 11,752 tests compared to the state's 11,635. We're also the eighth-highest test in public health lab in California at this point, higher than Alameda-Ventura, Santa Clara, and San Joaquin Counties' public health labs. So good, the lab staff have truly, truly stepped up to make sure that they're maximizing our output at that lab. That being said, we really are at that point of a lot of our labs are at capacity. There, I know, was widely covered attention about commercial lab testing and the delays in getting those test results. It got to the point that even the state had OptumServe stop using Quest Labs and instead moved to let's-get-checked labs in order to try and increase the turnaround time for those. When we were stretching into the five and seven days, you really start to create some problems when you get positives and then have to go back and look that five to seven days. The Cuiya Delta's public health lab and our public health lab really were at our capacity levels and in fact exceeded it sometime. The lab was having some challenges keeping up with our one-day turnaround. And we would expect then the state to start looking at reprioritizing who gets tested based on symptomatic individuals and also prioritizing those in congregate settings, skilled nursing-assisted living, and jails and prisons. I think it's also important to note, or two things. First of all, and our OptumServe sites are actually at this point now booked out for a week, a week out. So we're absolutely maximizing those sites and have really reached the peak capacity there. So we're evaluating additional testing options, but also recognizing that commercial labs are a huge driver of it. There, what the commercial labs have been doing is reducing the number of collection kits. They're providing the hospitals and other areas that are doing the collections, and they're doing that to try and reduce the volume of tests that they're processing. Obviously, that's created some pretty significant challenges for everybody, and the state's really encouraging local providers to be looking at alternative, smaller labs that can be doing testing still and have that capacity. So I think we're looking at an adjustment in terms of who's doing the actual testing of those samples. And then lastly, on OptumServe, we do know that the state contract is supposed to be up on August 31st. It hasn't been clear yet whether the state is going to continue to fund the Optum sites, or there's also an indication that they might give counties the option to take those sites over using CARES Act funds to continue to fund testing in the community. Shifting gears now on state activity, that's the other... Shifting gears now on state activity, that's the other spot. Obviously, we had a lot of changes in activity over the last week. The state did update their industry guidance for the monitoring list, counties requiring rollbacks in counties that have been on the monitoring list for three days. That was a significant departure from where they started with the closing the bars, which was looking at those that had been on the monitoring list for 14 days. What they've said on the industry rollbacks now is those will be in place for a minimum of three weeks. And that is regardless of whether or not the county falls off the monitoring list during that period. The more concerning piece for us and again, critical need to work on bringing our overall infection rates down is that counties that do not show improvement in those metrics will likely continue to have to have those industries dialed back until we do show improvement or go off the monitoring list. And although we haven't gotten a firm indication from the state yet, I would expect that if metrics worsen, counties will also be likely asked to roll back additional industries. The most likely targets in that case would be gyms, hair nail salons, and also some retail. So what the new guidance is saying is that businesses, these particular businesses must operate outside or offer curbside pickup, and that applies to dine-in restaurants, wineries and tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment centers such as bowling alleys, mini golf, batting cages, arcades, museums, and card rooms. And then the order for bars, breweries, brew pubs is that all of those must be closed. Yesterday, the state also did add six additional counties to the monitoring list, bringing a total of 23 counties that are now being ordered to roll back those industries. At the same time, the state has widely publicized their development of a multi-agency enforcement strike team that will be stationed strategically across the state. Those teams will be going into counties to ensure compliance to the orders and also provide education to business owners about how to protect workers. The team is comprised of Labor and Workforce Development Agency staff, Health and Human Services Agency staff, Department of Food and Agriculture, Business, Consumer Services, Housing, and the Governor's Office of Business Economic Development, OES, in addition to California Transportation Agency. What we've been told is Cal OSHA will be initially focused on educating employers on following the state health and safety guidance and then complying with paid sick leave regulations. And then if that employer were to continue to operate without committing to compliance, they would be subject to investigations, citations, and other enforcement actions. And then alcohol and beverage control is also going out with CHP to ensure compliance on businesses selling alcohol. The strike teams did report that they were in Tulare County over the weekend of the 4th. We haven't received any additional information as to what activities they did undertake, what businesses were contacted. Once we have that, I will make sure that I can get that over to the board. And then just generally on our case drivers, I will say, looking at our cases over the last few weeks, we really don't continue to not see any particular industry allocation that was the major driver for our increases. The infection rates and the infections are occurring across the county and across all sectors. We are seeing a frustrating trend where symptomatic individuals are getting tested, but then going to work, continuing about their daily business. And then particularly when we have delays then in getting those results back, they've infected a fairly large number of people as a result of not self-quarantining while they wait for those results. What we're encouraging is if an individual is symptomatic, they're getting tested, that it's crucial that they self-quarantine pending those results to avoid spreading it to others.
Tim, have you heard of any businesses that are having employees continue working with symptoms until a test comes back or anything?
Yes, we have had that crop up at various times. And again, I would say there isn't one industry or sector that it's the most prevalent in. We've seen it pretty widely from retail to packing houses and everything in between. And I think that's part of why Cal OSHA is now stepping up their enforcement on the paid sick leave piece, to be really emphasizing that if an employee is sick, they should be afforded the opportunity to be home and wait for those results and then be able to So wrapping up my report, again, we did have our press conference on Friday, and we had 19,000 views on the Facebook portion of that. Our hope again is a message of education and getting the word out on the importance of conforming to the regulations with the ultimate goal of reducing the infection rate, being able to reopen broader parts of the economy, and also bring kids back to school. Our incident cost to date, $2.6 million. And then on our project room key, currently 98 individuals being served, all but one are COVID negative. And we provided 451 nightly rooms last week. Total invoices to date for that program, 331,144. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Supervisor Valero, do you still, would you select the floor? You had put in a request, okay. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Townsend.
Thanks, Tim, for the report. Tim, on the R effective being down and case rates going up, could you explain that just a little bit, how that one's going down while the other's going up? That seems counterintuitive.
Yeah, I had the same question, and that's why I think it does help to think of that R effective as a little more analogous to a speedometer in terms of it's telling you how fast. It would expect your cases to be increasing. So what that's indicating is, anything above a one is still an accelerated growth, but as it gets closer to one, it means we could more or less stay at this growth rate. If it's below one, then we would expect the growth rating cases to go down. So hopefully, what it's foretelling is that, I mean, we're already at a very high level of caseload increases week after week. If that growth pattern is slowing down, then we start to level off. And then ideally, what we start to see is a negative R effective where our actual growth is going down and we're seeing fewer as a percentage, you know, weekly case by case numbers.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments from members of the board?
Just as usual, I just want to say compliments to your staff and the Public Health Department and everyone working so hard from HHSA during this. I think you guys are doing a wonderful job, and your testing numbers really do indicate the excellence there. And I think that your staff is absolutely to be commended. I think they're seeing this as an opportunity and a challenge to excel, and I think they're doing a great job at it. So our compliments, and I'm very hopeful that through the proactive efforts that have been undertaken by your staff and the county in general, sheriff, et cetera, we will be able to slow this down and prevent additional sectors in our local economy from being shut down and having to go back into complete lockdown because it seems to me that once we go back, it's going to be even harder to get out of that position, you know, with the state making it even more strict to remain closed for that three-week period, even if you do fall off the list. And then also changing the metric of being on the list for 14 days to three days, you know, just, it's pretty consistent with what this pandemic has been throughout, and that is changing metrics, changing targets.
Which is inconsistent.
And it makes it very difficult to know what you're aiming for. So again, I think your staff has persevered and worked very hard, given a situation that is constantly changing and really making things tough for not only your staff but for members of the public, not really sure if you're in a business or if you're just an individual, what you have to live by and where you need to gear your efforts. So it just makes it very difficult and frustrating. But regardless, I do appreciate the work that you were putting in and the work that all county employees are putting in right now. And of course, our business community for their patients and for individuals in the community, I'm hopeful that we adhere to the guidance and proactive efforts in order to help to better our situation. Supervisor Chucklin?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that the metrics have been ever-changing and a lot, there's been a lot of ambiguity. But I think one thing that's kind of concreted itself is the mask wearing. And so I would again encourage everybody to wear those masks. Like I said, the sheriff is doing an outstanding job with some outreach and education with that. Our folks are doing a good job, we see it. So I would just encourage everybody to wear masks.
Okay. Any additional comments from my colleagues? All right, if there are none. Before we move on to public comments, I did forget to mention one event that I did want to make sure that I highlighted. I do appreciate the Sheriff's Department and their PAL because what they are doing this week on, actually tonight, at the Carl Smith Middle School in Terabella, is they're actually having a drive-through food giveaway that will be taking place from 5:00 to 7:00. And I think that's definitely an effort to be commended. Appreciate the sheriff doing what he can to use his team to help those in this community who are definitely in need during this time. All right, that was it, and we will now move on to item three, which is public comments. I have several requests in front of me. I will take up the first. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Public comment canon will be limited to three minutes. First comment request I have is from Alex Gutierrez. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Alex Gutierrez from Tulare, California. And the reason for my comments today is the Tulare Public Cemetery District. So my comments are very specific to you, Mr. Supervisor Pete Vanderpoel, since you are representative of Tulare, of our Tulare area, and you're responsible for this issue. Also to District Attorney Tim Ward, who has received data and reports regarding the serious concerns at the Tulare Public Cemetery District. And my comments are also for the general public, who may not be aware, since this is a very small district, which is probably why it has so many issues. Death is guaranteed, so therefore it is extremely important that we are a functioning district with proper professional governance. An uncomfortable fact is death is a big business. During a pandemic with the ominous nearing autumn season, we need to address the mismanagement and hurt at our Tulare Public Cemetery District now, okay? So the Valley Voice has been extremely helpful in documenting and recording historical events as they've gone on. I want to begin first with the Valley Voice's article of December 4th, 2019, which states that the grand jury of Tulare County has started an investigation. Quote, "The Tulare County Grand Jury sent two requests for financial information to the Tulare Public Cemetery District. The first request was dated October 10th, the second was a dated October 25th. An extension was granted by the office, because the office manager requested it. Alberto Aguilar believed the inquiry sprang from the cemetery's irregular financial reports." It continues on, "Aguilar and Gilson, who are trustees, felt that there were many irregularities concerning the cemetery's revolving fund, how employees were paid, and in the manner in which their pay was calculated. Aguilar stated that Castaneda repeatedly violated cemetery policy by calculating employee pay by taking an average over 12 months. The district policy states that pay be based on time cards, not averages." Another Valley Voice article dated for a regular meeting April 23rd of this year was during the coronavirus beginnings. No remote access was given even after the current chairman, Steve Prezent, had put out a public letter about the COVID-19 situation, which included in it saying that he would try everything he could to provide remote access, but then the letter was removed. I've asked repeatedly why he removed that letter, and he has yet to answer exactly why. At that meeting, notable decisions were made, including the approving of an auditor's report, hiring two new groundskeepers, and voting to move money to continue their operations. On May 3rd, another article stated, quote, "The controversy swirling around the Tulare Public Cemetery District is that prominent families receive preferential treatment while other lesser-known families have to follow different rules," close quote. This has all reached the boiling point now with one family, the Martin family, who wrote a letter to the board and appeared at the board meeting to voice the mistreatment that they suffered by the office manager, only to be dismissed by the board majority because the two members, Aguilar and Gilson, who were attending remote access, mysteriously it cut off during that time period, for whatever reason. This was explained in the Valley Voice article dated June 18th. Now, on June 24th, the Valley Voice posted another article about a regular board meeting being scheduled again with no remote access for the public and it being outside.
Please wrap up your comments, Mr. Gutierrez.
Oh, did I pass it?
Yeah, you're over. I've given you an extra minute.
I'm sorry, I didn't even know. So there's many moving fast pieces, and I just want to let you know that the audit committee has a very profane appointed member, Linda Malloy, a vice chairman, Xavier Avila, who has an infamous tenure on the board, which includes outwardly hijacking a meeting, which is all on live video, a weak chairman, Steve Prezent, who by live video also admitted to being a peeping tom at trustee Vicky Gilson's home by looking through her windows. With all this going on, the newest third member, which you all appointed this year, usually remains very silent, but he makes his points clear whenever he votes on which side he's on. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, a malevolent situation is occurring, and we are sick and tired of it. This Thursday, a special meeting is to take place, although no agenda or meeting time has been posted on the website as of right now when I checked, to remove trustee Vicky Gilson and to elevate this office manager once again, probably with another pay raise. And that's my conclusion. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you for your comments. I have a request from Michelle Lippincott. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Lippincott. I am from the city of Tulare. I would like to address the mask-wearing mandate in our county. As a citizen and a free person, I am impelled to speak out. The response to the coronavirus is absurd and utterly detached from reality, and this cannot go on, it must not go on. I am particularly galled by the mask-wearing mandate from our governor. His mandate violates every principle of decency and good government. The county ought to repeal the local order immediately. I should not have to be muzzled like a dog just to go shopping and to go about life. Forced mask-wearing is a humiliation. There are no studies that conclusively prove that masks have a significant impact in preventing coronavirus. And I would like to just quote here from the agencies where we are pulling all of this, quote, "science." New England Journal of Medicine, "We know that mask-wearing outside healthcare facilities offer little, if any, protection from infection." Cal OSHA, "Cloth face coverings do not protect against COVID-19." California Department of Health, "There is limited evidence to suggest that the use of cloth face coverings by the public during a pandemic could help reduce disease transmission." FDA, "Even a properly fitted N95 mask does not prevent illness or death." CDC, "There is no scientific evidence for healthy people wearing masks." Neurosurgeon Dr. Russell Blakel, "There is no scientific evidence that masks are effective. If you are not sick, you should not wear a face mask." I could go on and on. Masks are not miracle cures, assuming that they work at all, and even if they did work, I still should not be forced to wear one. This, quote, "pandemic" was never a crisis. The CDC says that approximately 130,000 Americans have died with or from this disease. The CDC says that approximately 130,000 Americans have died with or from this disease. Three million Americans die every year. COVID deaths at present make up 3% of that total." And yet, we have completely lost our minds. And if it were not for the endless, the media endlessly highlighting the fear and death grasp day and night for months and months now, we would not have even noticed this pandemic. Our mask mandate isn't just inconsistent with reality, it is a violation of our right to liberty. The governor and local public health officials have no power to force me to wear a mask. We are a nation of laws, not orders. Governor Newsom's will is not law, this is not North Korea. I have a right to assemble, that means I have a right to gather with others, even if there is a risk. It means I have a right not to wear a mask. Our faces are a core part of our human identity, and the ability to see facial expressions, to see laughter, smiles, tears, et cetera, is necessary to speaking freely. No government can abridge this right in the general population under the Constitution of the United States of America. Treating healthy people as if they are sick, as if they are all plague carriers, is evil. It inculates fear and paranoia, and it wrecks community. I reject this anti-human impulse, I reject fear, and I reject the mask. And I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have a request from Mark Lippincott. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mark Lippincott. I'm from Tulare. A longtime resident of Tulare, I was born in Tulare. This is my home. I care deeply about Tulare. I'm speaking today, and I'm addressing mask-wearing. If I don't, I won't have any respect for myself. On Friday, June 19th, I was denied service at grocery outlet in Tulare. I was told by an employee that I had to wear a mask. When I refused, I was told to get out. I hope you find this disturbing. I refuse to wear a mask. Here are my legal reasons. Governor Newsom's extension of the state of emergency is unlawful. There is no current threat of a pandemic. The Wuhan virus numbers are fewer than a typical outbreak of communicable diseases. I have personal information of healthcare workers that work in the hospitals, I know better. And the hospitals and clinics on the edge of bankruptcy. The reopening phases, social distancing, wearing masks are guidelines and not enforceable by law. California Civil Code, Section 517, says that "I am free of intimidation, threat of violence, or denial of service, and provides that each citizen is free and equal. They are not to be discriminated by any business. No business may require any rule or regulation that is a medical intervention unless they provide a licensed medical doctor. The CDC has not confirmed any findings of the theory that healthy people wearing masks prevents the spread of illness. Forced separation slows transmission, and asymptomatic transmission occurs." I find the report today from the medical person threatening to the county and your funds. It's a threat from the government. Thus, businesses, residents, and governments are free to resume normal activities without any legal restrictions. I will not wear a mask for these personal reasons. It's inhumane. It's cruel. I do not have to follow guidelines. It's a sign that someone's trying to hide. It's hot. It's uncomfortable. It signals distrust. It's bullying. And my personal religious beliefs prohibit it. Citizens are being denied the following, and I hope you find it very troubling. Free exercise of in-person worship, including singing, food, public education, employment, right to open and run their own business, free protest in large groups, banking, EECU won't let me get in, they're my bank, exercise in the gym, public sports, swimming, gathering with families and friends for weddings, funerals, birthdays, and holy days. The solution? Ask those who are elderly or at risk to self-quarantine and let the rest of us get on with our lives. What I expect from my elected representatives, you guys, stand for equality under the law for everyone stated in the Bill of Rights. Equal for everybody. Allow for the free exercise of free speech, and stand for the common citizen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Are there additional members of the public who wish to comment on any item today that is not within, that is within our purview but not on today's agenda? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any phone comments?
We do not.
Okay, there are no phone comments at this time. I will close the public comment period and bring it back to our scheduled agenda. We'll quickly take up the consent calendar before I take up our 9:30 timed item. This consent calendar consists of items five through 17. Item number nine, I believe, Madam Clerk, you're going to read a correction or some specifics on item nine?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Melinda Benton, Chief Clerk to the Clerk of the Board. Item nine before the Board includes two actions. The first is to request that the Board cancel all non-county seat meetings that were previously scheduled at our February 25th meeting. The second request is to adopt the order of adjournment of the Board of Supervisors meetings to the following specified times. Next week, as mentioned earlier from the chair, the July 14th, 2020 meeting, we'll convene at 4:00 PM for closed session here in the Board Chambers and reconvene for open session at 6:30 PM. Our August 18th meeting will be a regular meeting and will convene at 9:00 AM, which was originally scheduled for an evening, but we have moved that to a 9:00 AM once again here in the Board Chambers. October 13th, 2020 meeting will be, again, scheduled here in the Board Chambers for closed session starting at 4:00 PM, and we will reconvene back for open session at 6:30 PM. If there's any questions, I can answer those.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for that. Are there any additional corrections or items on the consent calendar, Board Members or members of the public would like to pull for separate consideration? All right, seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion. Have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, I'm going to go back on our agenda and take up our 9:30 timed item, which is item four. It's a public hearing. It's a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider the establishment of new application fees for agricultural preserves, farmland security zones, and Williamson Act contracts. I will open the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members, Mr. CAO, and County Council. Mike Washam with RMA. And today, I'm bringing forward this matter because at a previous board meeting, there was a referral to staff to bring forward this for the potential lifting of the Williamson Act moratorium for board consideration and direction. Today, I'll do my best to kind of walk through the program. I've had some requests to kind of explain the process a little bit more thoroughly so everybody's up to speed on how it actually works and operates. And I brought it forward with fees as well, in case the Board chooses to move forward. We can do so without delay by accepting the fees today. That way, we can get people on the tax roll starting next year because there's deadlines coming up that I'll discuss in the presentation. So we don't want to become a culture of big government bureaucracy. We want to be able to be business-friendly, so we're bringing this and condensing this all so you have an option to move forward at this time if that's the way the Board would like to do that. So I will give an overview of the program, talk a little bit about the elimination of subvention, the new AB 1265 charges that are allowed, and some case studies. And I also was told to kind of review against what the impact to the general fund is by having the Williamson Act, so I've got some charts in there as well that we'll talk about that. Then the processes to get your land in the Act under contract, and then finally with the fees. So that's kind of the outline. Hopefully, it'll go faster than I just kind of described. So the Williamson Act program was set up back in 1965, and it's a way to protect the, restrict the uses on agricultural land. There was a lot of, in the '60s was big-time sprawl going on, so it was, is trying to protect the agricultural resources. And it didn't really get picked up really big-time until the early '70s because there wasn't an incentive for governments to reduce the taxes without the subvention. So in '71 is when subvention payments started. And that was to encourage participation, and that's really what kicked it off and really got it going big-time was in the early '70s. If you look back at most of the contracts we do have in existence, were first done in the early '70s. Finally, so it's basically a tenure continuously, automatically renewing every year. And the payments, the subvention payments, were based on $5 per prime acre, $1 for non-prime acreage, and $8 for farmland security program. So essentially, what we're looking at is, 2008 was the last time subvention, full subvention payments were paid, and that was $3.4 million to the county. Currently, the Williamson Act has a little over a million acres, consisting of almost 14,000 parcels. And the farmland and security zones consist of about 10,000 acres or 202 parcels. This is the basics of the contracts. For prime land, you have to have at least 10 acres, 10-acre parcel or larger. And for non-prime is 40 acres. Farmland security actually has a little bit higher tax break benefit for the recipient, and it's prime ag and it's closer into the cities. It's ones that are surrounding the cities, and that's why it's a little bit a higher benefit for the landowner. And Tulare County has a 20-acre minimum size for ag preserves. The state requires 100-acre minimum, but the county has moved forward and traditionally allowed smaller preserves with a 20-acre minimum. On July, in July of 2009, Governor Schwarzenegger vetoed the Williamson Act subvention funds for the 2009-2010 budget. Reality, he took and dropped it down to $1,000 total for the state, and you'll see what we got there. But that resulted in a $3.4 million loss to the county. As a result of the elimination of the subvention funds, as well as whether there's any uncertainty regarding going forward, whether they'd ever return or not, a stakeholder group was formed at the direction of your board. RMA provided an overview of alternative actions that we could, your board could consider. And in August of 2009, your board placed a moratorium on accepting new contracts and new ag preserves, and actually initiated non-renewal of substandard Williamson Act prime parcels. Over the, about three months' worth of work, the RMA identified about 360 parcels that were substandard as far as not meeting the requirements. There was a number of protests, about 80 protests. I think we accepted all but one or two of them. So it resulted in 255 substandard parcels having a full non-renewal initiated by the county. Other counties, Imperial County, completely eliminated all, they non-renewed the entire thing, and they are out of the Williamson Act totally as of probably this year, because it's been 10 years. So they non-renewed the entire county. So once the subvention funds went away, a number of alternative funding programs kind of popped up, other ideas. SB 863 and Assembly Bill 2530 were two original, and this is basically how it's morphed from that, was a 10% tax increase to landowners for the, 10% of the lost property tax revenue to the county is assessed to the property owner. So in other words, we're getting a subvention, and that money goes straight to our general fund directly. So we're recovering 10% of that loss at the landowner's expense. So the landowner is paying a little bit more than what they, the full benefit they were getting previously. But then that continued on and allowed some subvention going on based off of not state subvention, but landowner subvention, really. That was eliminated in, it was supposed to run from 2011 to 2015, but it was eliminated in the budget of 11, the state budget in 2011. So the very next later that year, Assembly Bill 1265 came along, and that reestablished the provisions of the original bill, and it was going to be extended through January 1st of 2016. So that sunset clause had kind of loomed over the process. But then in late 2014, SB 1353 deleted that sunset clause, and so now we're permanently lined up with the AB 1265 charges. So this is what we were looking at, the subvention funds. We were getting 3 million, we were due 3.4 million in 2009. Like I said, the governor had eliminated it down to 1,000 statewide, so the county received, instead of 3.4 million, we received $98. And since then, we've received no dollars. So the AB 1265 legislation allows the county to collect a calculated charge on each parcel that's under contract. And that shortened length is basically 10%, because it's a 10% rollout. So we're able to capture 10% of the lost property tax. And then that fully goes to the county instead of being allocated to different departments, different districts, different other entities. So that really is a good boost right to the general fund. The direct charges, like I said, straight to the general fund, and they've been continuing the increase over the years. If you can see through this chart, back in 2013, the first year, we got 2.5 million, and it's grown consistently until last year, we got 4.1 million. So now, this has completely surpassed the value of the subvention, original subvention funding.
And Mike, real quick, if you don't mind me stopping you, I just want to point out that all of these changes have occurred without the entering into of new contracts, correct?
Correct. And this is just the existing program. So what I'm going to do is walk through a few examples of, a couple case studies of showing actually what it looks like on a real piece of land. So if you see up at the top here, you see the Prop 13 land value and the growing improvements. They're assessed on two different pieces. You're assessed on the land, and you're assessed on the value of the crops. So in this particular case, this is about 18-acre parcel that's planted in Naval and Valencia oranges, and it's based on a 1990 Prop 13 base year valuation. So you're looking at the total valuation here is $295,000 based on Prop 13. On the restricted land value under the contract, those have been reduced down, and you see that the restricted value is 107,000. So without the contract, the property owner would be paying $2,953 a year in property taxes. Under the restricted value, they're paying 1,077. However, when you put that 10% of the difference between the new tax and what the old one was, the AB 1265 would result in a $188 charge. So that's where we're getting that extra boost. So ultimately, instead of paying $2,953, the landowner would be paying $1,265 or saving $1,688, basically 57% off their taxes. Now, what does that look like over into the revenue to the county? With no Williamson Act, we would be receiving $1,000, $1,004. Under this, under the restricted with the AB 1265 charges, we'll be receiving $554 to our general fund, or a reduction of 45% or $450. Just to point out that property tax is 1%, the amount that actually ends up going to the general fund is about 34% of that 1%. So that's how we look at that. And then I put that third column on just to kind of show, if the subvention had been continuing, what that would look like comparing the last two columns, we're actually making out better under AB 1265 than we would have under the original subvention. But here's just another version of that, to see that they look a lot different. There's a lot of variables in here, because in this case, the reduction went from 450,000 and dropped down to 3,900. Because in this case, the reduction went from four hundred and fifty thousand, dropped down to three ninety-one. The property tax has been reduced by six hundred and three dollars ultimately, or only thirteen percent. So the other one was reduced by, what was it, fifty or sixty percent, fifty-seven percent. This one's only getting a much smaller. And that's based on, it was on a Prop thirteen two thousand year and the crop is based off of the two thousand year. So there's, there's a lot of difference, lots of variables, and that's where we're, we're looking at that. This example here is on grazing land, so there's no value to the growing improvement. So, and this was, been in, in the system for a long time, so nineteen seventy-five Prop thirteen base year. So you're looking at the landowners getting about a six hundred and sixty-two dollar break on taxes. And we're seeing a reduction of about a hundred and seventy-six dollars into the general fund. So this is, just gives you kind of an idea of that. If there's any questions on how this works, stop me now. So then we're looking at what the current impact would be, is currently on the, on the general fund. So with the contracts that we have in place right now, you're looking at overall a savings of thirty-seven million dollars in property taxes to property owners that are under contract right now, countywide. And that represents, when you factor in the, the AB twelve sixty-five charges, represents about a nine point nine hit to the general fund, nine point nine million dollar hit to the fund. That's where we are now. That's what we've been dealing with the whole time. This is about six percent. The assessed value of Williamson Act properties are about six percent of the overall tax roll for the county. So you're looking at about six percent of that. If, if it was removed, if, if these weren't in there, then that, the percentage would obviously boost up because these are already restricted in, in our tax roll. But that's, that's about what you're looking at. And then to go forward, we have to use a lot of assumptions on, on, on what the potential hit could be or what it would look like. There's about nine thousand agricultural parcels still out there that are not under Williamson Act. And based on sizes of parcels, different, different situations, it's, it's estimated that maybe fifty-six hundred could be eligible potentially. I don't think it's going to be that high, but that, that's the potential of maximum. And then you're assuming a, a base value reduction of about fifty percent. Again, that's overall, I think right now we're at about sixty-two percent. So it's a little low than what is out there currently. But it's a general estimate that would be appropriate to, to put on this as far as where we're at now. So under the worst-case scenario, and that worst-case meaning just, we're looking just strictly as hit to the, the general fund, is a loss of property tax in, in the way of seven, seven million, three hundred and seventeen dollars. And then one point nine million of that would be going into the, the general fund. So that'd be worst-case scenario. I don't think that this, I would think that there's going to be significantly less than this that'll actually be going back into it. But that's, that's where that stands as far as the analysis of the dollars and cents. So the process to get landowners wanting to put their land into the Williamson Act, it's really a three-step process. You have to come, file an application, come to the board, and the board will create, establish an ag preserve. And, and then, just to mention on this, this has a deadline because we need to get these pretty ahead of the, the calendar year so it gets on tax rolls. Normally, the county has traditionally taken applications between the, accepted the applications between July first and August thirty-first. And then come to the board in early October to have the one public hearing and have the, the preserves established or expanded or whatever's going to be done with them. And then follow that up by a few weeks later, coming back with any new contracts. So the way the process works is to have a contract, you have to have a, the land has to be in the ag preserve. And then you can contract off parcels out of that. So a preserve could have multiple owners, could be very large. You might have, you know, five, say five hundred acres, and you might have five owners with a hundred acres each in there potentially. So the preserves could be large, then you piece out the contracts out of the preserve. So that, like I said, first is to come to the preserves. Then, then we come back out after the preserves are created to get the contracts. And then, then after that, they get their tax benefit on, on the next year's tax rolls. There will be, right now it's hard to say because there's a lot of ag preserves that are still out there. So someone might not have a contract and they might be able to go without having to even deal with the first step of getting a preserve. Their land already might be in a preserve. If they're going through a non-renewal and now they want to come back into it, that, and that preserve is still there, there won't be a need for establishing a preserve. It's simply a matter of getting the contract back in play, getting a new contract in place. So that's, that's the process of, of how we do that. And then the fees, the recommendation of, of the fees is a thousand dollars for forming the preserve. And that, the previous fees ranged from three hundred and fifty to seven hundred and three dollars. Depending on the numbers of owners in, in the preserve, it would, it would get larger. Those fees were last adopted in two thousand and one, over nineteen years ago. We, and they've been out of our fee schedule for at least two years, I believe. And because they hadn't been updated, haven't been used. So we said, we're going to need to look at those again before we start the process when, when we do. As far as ag contracts or reinstatements, we're looking, we're recommending a five hundred dollars. They were a hundred and twenty-five dollars back in nineteen ninety-one. Just to give a way of comparison, at that same time, those were established non, notice of non-renewals. We charged eighty-eight dollars at that time. Now those, those have been up to four hundred and sixty dollars now. So just kind of give an idea of, of where the fees are. We're recommending one flat fee because the processing is, is really essentially the same, whether there's multiple owners or, or not. The, it's about the same type of work. So for simplification, we're recommending just one fee for each type of application. The other thing is, same thing with the contract versus reinstatement. It's the same, it's the same process, so we're recommending the same thing. We, the RMA analyzes the steps in processing these applications and, and are proposing these fees based on time cost recovery, which we've been directed to be cost recovery. That's what we do as far as setting fees. The proposed fees don't include any additional fees, if any, that are imposed by other departments or anything. There would probably be a recording fee that would be added onto that, the recorder's fee. And again, all fees are, every year, we annually review them to determine if there needs to be adjustments made up or down based on actual time spent processing those applications. And, and then present it to your board for consideration before we adopt our, the RMA's fee schedule each, each April. So that's really the, the extent of my report. If the board's decision is to lift the moratorium, the RMA will have applications ready starting next Monday morning. We'll have them online, we'll have them hard copies. And they could, anybody interested could call the RMA as well to get more information about it. So that would be, that'd be the, the extent of my report. Open for questions, comments?
Okay. Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mike, for presenting this. I think this is something that's been a long time coming. We've talked about Williamson Act and the need from a lobbying standpoint to add for subvention dollars. But this is something that I appreciate our assessor bringing this up over several conversations and saying that, you know, we've actually made up all the dollars that we would have been, that we would have received as far as subvention, just because of non-renewals and, and through Williamson Act. And so I, this is a great thing. We've, we've, you know, we continue to reduce taxes if we move forward with this while everyone else seemingly is trying to increase taxes. We've, we always talk about being pro-business, pro-agriculture. And we can show how pro-ag we are by lifting the moratorium today. And I, I just think that it's, you know, now's the time to help farmers. We're, we're dealing with a pandemic. This is something that will really help. I think overall, by the examples, you know, depending on the acreage, it's not, every little bit helps. It's not, I don't know that anyone's going to be, you know, buying a new yacht or something because they're getting a Williamson Act. But I think the reality is, is that, you know, with such slim margins and, and with different conditions in markets and with water situations and increased labor issues and regulatory issues, that every little bit is going to help try and keep agriculture strong in Tulare County.
All right. Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mike, for the presentation. Couple things. AB twelve sixty-five does not have a sunset. Is that correct?
No, it's, it's, it's in, in, you know, the sunset clause was eliminated in two thousand and fourteen. I do want to say that, that what is still in the legis, in, in the law, in the code, it still has the wording, any year that the subvention payments don't cover half of the thing, which is probably never going to happen and they're probably never going to kick it off. But that clause is still there, so at some point, somehow, that could happen. But very, very doubtful.
Okay, all right. And then I noticed we had a letter from the, the Farm Bureau in support of this. They did have a question, I think, on the solar fields and whether, it, it sounded like maybe they were looking at, at, you know, our solar fields on ag land, prime ag land or in the farm security zones. Should they be, you know, allowed on an ag preserve?
We're, to address that, we're not changing anything on proposed uses under the uniform rules. The uniform rules essentially are the zoning ordinance for, for AE forty, I believe. That's what was put in. Your board back in two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirteen made determinations about solar compatibility. They find that it's compatible with the non-prime farmlands. And they've, and made, so that, we've, we've continued with that, that process. In prime farmlands, I believe the wording was unless there's a unique situation brought to the board for, for consideration on the, on the prime farmlands.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it.
All right. Supervisor Valero.
Yes, and because I do serve on the Ag Advisory Committee, I just want to share that Jim Solins did send out an email indicating that the Ag Committee did not have an opportunity to review. And so just wanted to share that with you and maybe just explain why we weren't able to take it to the Ag Committee. Has it been due to COVID? Did just, we haven't been able to meet? And given the timeframe of this, can you just?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yes, I, and I saw that and that was on my note to mention too. That Ag, the, the committee hasn't met for a number of months, mostly because of the COVID virus. But then the timing came is, this was essentially, if you, if you recall last week, the, the noise ordinance was about a two-minute presentation of just getting direction from the full board. This is really, it was, because this was a referral at the end of a meeting to bring this back. This was originally going to be just a hey, but we wanted to be pro-business and pro-farming. So we wanted to make sure we had all the tools here. We had to notice, this is why, this is why this was delayed by a week as well, to get the public hearing noticing out properly so we could do the, the fines, the, or the fees. The, the issue that I'm also asking for is the, as part of this, is that the, the fees don't go into effect for sixty days. Requesting a, a one-time accommodation to allow us to process without collecting the fees, because legally we can't charge them for sixty days if you choose to implement them now. But then that we will defer the fees until we schedule that public hearing later in the year. And that's one of our requests. And so we haven't met. Originally, this was going to be just get full direction from the board. But we wanted to set the plate that if the board chooses to move, we're able to move right away rather than doing that. And I don't, I don't know that the, the Farm Bureau is on that as well. I, I don't know that the Ag Committee wouldn't be supportive of, of reestablishing the Williamson Act. So we'll bring it back to them as a full report the next time we meet, which I think is in August.
Thank you.
And Mike, I, I have just a few comments. So first of all, on that, you know, the, the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee exists as a vetting mechanism for various issues. I, you know, I tend to agree with you that they would likely be supportive of this. But maybe their comments or suggestions could have helped tailor how this was presented back here at the board. So I, I hope that you can go back and give a presentation and should there be any changes or suggestions, maybe through a virtual meeting or something, it can come back and be implemented. But that being said, I know we're under a tight timeframe to get this done and have that positive impact for our agricultural community sooner rather than later. So I'm not in favor of delaying or slowing this down. I want, I, I do think that this is a critical program for agriculture, and I do want to see this move forward. I know that you said that there's a potential for, you know, roughly about five thousand or so new applications. One question that I have is for the assessor's office. I know that, I don't see the esteemed Roland Hill present, but I know Tim is here. Is, is the appraisal staff at the assessor's office capable of handling a five thousand-plus parcel onslaught and determining valuations, et cetera? I don't know that they're going to see that necessarily, but, you know, I just want to make sure the assessor's office and everybody's been communicating and, and ready to go, should the board give this green light?
Yes, I, I won't speak for Tim. Tim can come up and, and address this himself as like. But yes, we've had that discussion that
Okay, good.
they're able to do that. We really don't anticipate, I'm, I'm, I don't know how many parcels it will be, but I'm anticipating probably the first, this year, next year, we'll probably have a, a, a big boost and then it will probably level off.
Taper off, yeah.
taper off. I think that, you know, we're probably looking, I'm thinking ten thousand acres probably at the most of this new thing. A lot of them being one project in particular, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Tim, do you have any follow-up coming or is that, is that about right? Okay, thank you. Appreciate you being here. And again, I'm very supportive of this. It's been a long time. I know that the Williamson Act has been a, a point of advocacy as we go up to Sacramento, I feel like, every year since the subvention's been eliminated. Even though the county has fared fairly well, unfortunately, the landowners, the farmers, the property taxpayers have not fared as well. And this is a tremendous benefit potentially to them. And I think that it's something we need to absolutely move forward with, and I'm fully supportive. That being said, and board comments and questions being asked, I would like to open this up for public comment now. Public comment will be entertained and will be limited to three minutes per speaker if anyone wishes to speak regarding this item. No public comments? Any calls in?
No calls.
Madam Clerk, okay. We'll bring it back to the board for consideration of action. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, a sec, whoop, actually a motion by Supervisor Struckley, unless she wants to fix it. Okay, and a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes five oh unanimously, so get ready for the onslaught. Thank you very much. I appreciate your help and presentation of that item. We will now move on and take up item eighteen, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to authorize the submission of a grant application for funding from the two thousand and twenty-one Active Transportation Program for the countywide safety enhancement quick build project with an estimated total project cost of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You ready, Hernan?
I think so.
All right.
That's the first time that's ever happened. Calling me as a large.
Well, what do we say, you know? Good morning, Chairman, Chair, Chair Vanderpoel, members of the board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, Hernan Beltran, Resource Management Agency. Today, we're here to request your board's authorization to submit a quick build grant application for the two thousand and twenty-one Active Transportation Program. Before beginning, I'd like to provide a quick overview of today's presentation. I would first like to go over the, provide some quick background on the Active Transportation Program. Following that, I would like to briefly go over our success with the program, with the ATP, with the ATP program and show you some pictures of some completed, recently completed projects funded through the program. Then I would like to go over our proposed quick build grant application. And lastly, I would like to discuss the, our game plan for the next component, which is the infrastructure component of the ATP, ATP program. Active Transportation Program. California, the California Transportation Commission, also known as the CTC, released their grant applications, applications for the two thousand and twenty-one Active Transportation Program, also known as Cycle Five of the ATP. The goal of the program is The goal of the program is, is really to increase safety for non-motorized users, encouraging more walking and biking. With the passage of SB 1, funding for this, for this funding cycle increased to 440, 440 million during the cycle, which pretty much doubled from the original cycle, which was about 200 million. Eligible projects for, for the program include infrastructure-type projects, which are capital improvement projects, sidewalks, curb and gutter project type projects. There's also a development of community plans for the, for the program, which include your pedestrian, safe route to school, ATP type plans. And there's a non-infrastructure project component to it, which is more educational and encouraging more walking and biking to school. There's also a new program, this, well, new to the, new to this program this year, we have the Quick Build Pilot Program, which, which it's, which, well, I'll have more details on, in the next slide. So as far as previous awarded projects, we've been really, we feel like we've been really successful. We've been awarded projects in every cycle. In Cycle One, we were awarded approximately $800,000 in funding. What was key in this, in the cycle was that we were able to secure funding for our Safe Route to School Plan, which was, which set the foundation for the, for the, for the ATP grant application. The, in Cycle Two and Cycle Three, we received three projects as well apiece and we were able to secure approximately $3 million in funding each, during each cycle. As far as Cycle Four, the last cycle, in 2019, we were able to secure funding, 1.3 million in funding for the, for the Road 160 Sidewalk Improvement in, project in Ivanhoe. Most of these projects listed here were, have been completed. And I'll show you a few pictures in the next coming slide. The, during Cycle One, we received the award. We, we completed the, we had the Terabella Sidewalk Improvement Project located on Avenue 94 between Road 236 and Road 238. The key feature of this project was that it connected the, the park with the, with the school in Terabella. To the right, we also have our Tulleville Sidewalk Improvement Project in the community of Tulleville. The key feature on this project was that we were, that this project included the construction of a bus pullout that accommodates two buses. Both of these projects were awarded during Cycle One and were completed in 2016. In Cycle Two, we had, we had two projects. Both of these projects have been completed now. We had, to the left there, we have Traver Jacobs, which includes sidewalk improvements along Jacob Drive between Burke and Canal, connecting that school, connecting the school near Canal Drive. On the, on the right there, we have Early Mart Park Sidewalk Improvement Project. This project, this project provided pedestrian and drainage improvements along the recently completed Early Mart Neighborhood Park and connects to the school, the elementary school there in Early Mart. Both of these projects were completed in late 2019 and early 2020. In Cycle Three, we had a Woodville Sidewalk Improvement Project located along Road 168 between the Woodville Elementary School and Avenue 168. Project included pedestrian improvements along with flashing beacons as you enter the community. And we also had the Allen's Worth Elementary Sidewalk Improvement Project, which was located along Young Road and Avenue 36 adjacent to the Allen's Worth School District and the Community Center. Both of these projects were also completed in 2019. The current projects that we have in construction, we, we have our Pixie Main Street Improvement Project. Project was awarded during Cycle Two. And it, it, it's located along Main Street between Terabella Avenue and Court Avenue. Construction for this project began in May of this year and we anticipate completion in August. Soon to be in construction, we have the Early Mart Sidewalk Improvement Project, which we are currently advertising for construction. The project was awarded during the Cycle Three of the ATP. And we anticipate construction to begin late August, early September for this project. So what is a quick build project? As mentioned earlier, the quick build project is new to the ATP program this year. Quick build projects are, are pretty much low-cost projects that can be built in a short period of time, which furthers, which furthers the goals of the ATP program, encouraging more biking and walking, increase the safety of the communities. If awarded, if awarded, our goal is to install these devices, track safety devices, late next year, in 2021, because funding would be made available during July of 2021. The projects, these projects were selected, well, the proposed project that, that we are proposing here as part of this application are to install flashing beacons and radar feedback signs throughout various communities in the county. As shown on the left, we were proposing to do, to install flashing beacons at nine school crossings. And we're also proposing to install 43 total, or 43 radar feedback signs at the entrance to the various communities listed there. The locations shown on the slide were selected through the county's outreach efforts throughout the years with the community and our complete, and our complete street projects. Our experience with these types of safety devices is that they do work to slow, to bring awareness to the drivers as they approach the, these crossings and speed zones entering into the community. So the goal is to really just slow people down as they hit the community, enter the communities. The estimated project cost for this project is $850,000. We understand that, that this project is a bit on the ambitious side, considering that the pilot program itself only covers, only has $7 million available. However, in case we don't receive any funding, the information we put together for this application could help us, will help set the, set us up for the future, future funding opportunities with other programs. Looking ahead, as indicated, we've done very well with the ATP program. However, with the new, each, each new funding cycle is becoming more and more difficult to get funding due to the competitiveness of the program. To help us develop strong application this year, TCAG invited CTC staff last summer to visit some of the projects, project locations and, which provided us with a great opportunity to show CTC the scope of our projects and the importance of these type of projects in our rural communities. Based on the feedback and strategy, based on the feedback provided by CTC staff, we, our, our strategy this year is to focus on, on the following five projects. We believe that we have a better chance of receiving funds through this program if we focus on five projects, which are, one, the Poplar Avenue, Avenue 145 Sidewalk Improvement Project, the Cutler George Road and Second Drive Sidewalk Improvement Project, Tipton Sidewalk Improvement, and Strathmore Complete Street Improvements. And last, we have the East Porterville Crabtree Sidewalk Improvement Project. Note that the application for, for the ATP was, were originally due last this month. However, due to the COVID-19 situation, the deadline has been moved to September. So staff is currently working on the applications and we anticipate bringing, coming back to your board to request authorization to submit the applications. With that, I conclude my, that concludes my presentation. Before I do the request, I would like to thank your board and the CEO's office for guidance and support. I also like to thank TCAG for continued, their continued support and for taking the initiative in inviting CTC staff to visit our county and providing guidance on our future ATP submissions. I also like to give a special thank you to staff for their efforts and dedication in delivering these type of projects made available through ATP. With that, I would like to request that your board authorize the submission of grant applications for funding, funding from the 2020 Active Transportation Program Quick Build Project. And with that, I'll make myself available for any questions.
All right. A few questions that I had real quick, Hernan. You are correct. Since we began applying for this type of funding in 2013, RMA has always been very ambitious. But I do think that that ambition has paid off. If you look at the various improvements that we've seen for different types of projects that may not have been funded in the past, we've seen some great things done and great accomplishments in rural communities. I mean, Allen's Worth got their first sidewalk as a result of this. That's pretty incredible. And I think that that's going to have a lasting impact, at least in that community. First question, is that a, an all or nothing program? So it's either all application, or all aspects of the application are funded, so our $850,000 request is applying, is going for, you know, the total allocation of $1 million? Will they only award all of that? Or could they award a portion only?
I think the, the way I read it, it said it's open and they have the option of awarding various or none, you know? So it's, it's a new pilot program. They're trying to, I think they're testing the waters. And, you know, we welcome any, any funding opportunity, any, any, any participation, you know? I feel like they've, in the past, they've scaled down projects as well. So there's, might be an opportunity for a scaled-down project.
Well, and that's what I was going to ask. If we were only given partial funding, what projects do you anticipate? Do you think it would be the speed indicator signs entering communities? Or would it be the crosswalks? Would it be a mixture of both based on highest need? What do you envision?
I, I think that we probably had to go back and look at our strategy, but perhaps maybe do them all. I would like, I'll likely do them all, you know, going back and finding, finding the match, you know, to do them all. I think that they're all needed. These are great community projects. And I would probably focus on, on schools, on the schools first.
Okay. And then lastly, I just think it's great that the strategy is to be ready for future funding opportunities. If they may not fit in this program, maybe they'll fit in another and you've got the application already. So I think that's a great thing. Great job. Kudos to you and to the RMA staff for being innovative and finding ways to improve the infrastructure in our disadvantaged rural communities. I think that's wonderful. Any additional comments? Any of my colleagues? Members of the public? Okay, seeing none. Chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Supervisor Valero and a second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously. Thank you, Hernan, for the presentation and we will now continue on, on our agenda and now move on to item 19, which is a request from the County Administrative Office to authorize the County Administrative Officer to sign and submit a certification for receipt of funds from the California Department of Finance to receive Coronavirus, Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jason Britt, County Administrative Officer. The item before you is just that. There are two certification forms attached for your review and a request of authorization to sign. One is for the CARES Act funding that came through the federal government to the states and the state's budget is now passing that money on to the counties pending certification of some requirements. And the other is for the realignment backfill funding that was included in the governor's budget that support our human services, behavioral health, health and public safety programs. The governor's, just some by way of background, the governor's budget included $48.9 million to Tulare County for COVID-19-related expenditures to respond, mitigate, and to cushion the effects of the public health emergency on the community. The government, the governor's budget also included $1 billion to backfill lost revenue that's used to support public safety and social service programs. It's a little complicated, but in the, with the billion-dollar realignment fund, $750 million was already included in the governor's budget and, and is a general fund backfill to these realignment funds. So that's, in essence, guaranteed as long as we follow, comply with the requirements of that funding. And then there's $250 million that is conditioned on whether the state receives more federal fund. So the portion of the $750 million that is already in the governor's budget is roughly $9.5 million coming to Tulare County. If the additional $250 million materializes, that's approximately an additional 3.1. So there's a 9.5 for sure, up to 12.6 or 7 total if, if the other additional federal funds materialize. Both the CARES Act and realignment backfill funds are subject to the county's compliance with any federal guidance, the state stay-at-home requirements and any other health requirements as directed in the Governor's Executive Order N 3220, any subsequent executive orders or statutes, as well as any California Department of Public Health Orders, directives, and guidance in response to the COVID-19 emergency, and of course, using the funds as appropriately defined in the, you know, Budget Act. So, and the realignment requirements are very similar. At the July 14 meeting, this board will consider a recommended spending plan for the CARES Act and the realignment funding will be included in the department's budgets for the board to consider during our normal budget hearings. With that, I respectfully request the board to authorize the CAO to sign both the CARES Act and realignment backfill certification forms, agreeing to comply with all conditions required to receive the funding and submit the certification forms to the State Department of Finance before the July 10, 2020 deadlines. That does conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Supervisor Struckley?
Actually, Dr. Britt answered my question as far as coming back with a expenditure plan. So, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, and I, I just, my comments are regarding that as well, that it's going to be important that we have a good thorough discussion. I think you've heard from many of us, if not all of us already, about some of the emphasis that we can go in that and I look forward to discussing that next week.
All right. And only comment that I, any, anything else? Any of my colleagues? Only comment that I have is it's, you know, it's interesting when you look at this. I think we figured with the CARES Act funding that the $49 million would probably be contingent upon compliance with state orders. That was pretty clearly indicated to us. But the now contingency of compliance for a portion of realignment revenue, look, the CARES Act money is money that would be considered new money that we wouldn't have already been receiving. But the realignment money, that's real money and real existing jobs, programs, et cetera, that are directly related to that. And so that's a very interesting item that we have to be very careful of, I think, here in Tulare County. But look, I want to make sure that Tulare County navigates through this pandemic and finds its way on the other side of it. So I don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize that potential.
Just by way of information to the board, for the $750 million backfill realignment, approximately $6.5 million is for social services and a little over $2 million is for public safety.
Yep. All right. Any, any public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do have one.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you for holding.
Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Blanca Escobedo, a policy advocate for Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Good morning. I just have a really brief comment. I know that the spending allocation will be decided next week, but I wanted to urge the board to look into the most pressing needs of the communities this coming week, and based on our contact with them and our conversations, there's an urgent, urgent need for renting, rent assistance and, and housing assistance in order to prevent homelessness, in order to prevent just additional strain on communities and on households that have not been working. And in addition to supporting businesses, I urge you to look into the undocumented population who have not been eligible for unemployment services, as well as not being able to connect to other types of emergency funding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Madam Clerk. Anything else?
There's no calls.
Okay. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Approval?
Have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley, and a second by Supervisor Townsend. Motion passes 5-0 unanimous. Thank you for that item, Mr. Britt. We will now move on to item 20, which is a board member request portion of the meeting for members to make a referral to staff to have a matter considered for a future agenda. Are there any such requests today? Okay. Seeing none, I will look to County Council. Do we have need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Item A is off calendar. The remainder of the items will be heard. I do not expect any announcements out.
Okay. Knowing that we have no announcements out, we will clear the chambers, and board will remain in here for a closed session. Thank you for attending today's Board of Supervisors' meeting. Stay safe and healthy. Meeting adjourned to closed session.